January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice of new business, I have none. Counsel?
None yours, or mayor?
CAO? Adoption of the agenda by consensus.
Aye.
Adoption of minutes, we have December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved, Mayor Hanson.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any errors or omissions?
None noted.
In favor, opposed, carried. Business arising out of the minutes, we have none. Presentations and delegations, we have capital and operating budget presentation by David Joy, our chief financial officer.
Thank you, Your Worship and Counselors. Yes, this is two thousand and twenty-three operating capital budgets. We're presenting to you a draft budget. And even though we're presenting to counsel a balanced operating budget, further discussion and direction is always welcome and required.
We face some major budget challenges. First and foremost was the contractual obligations we have through our collective agreements, and specifically this time around with the BCGU collective agreement. In the agreement itself, there's a clause there that for every percentage, the Consumer Price Index exceeds three and a half percent, the equivalent percentage increase shall be applied to the wage scale. This has not only affected the budget, but it's affected two thousand and twenty-two actual results also. And there's, there's no wiggle room on this at all. It's currently being negotiated with the union. They haven't settled on a final percentage and, but we've, we have already, well, we have already accrued for two thousand and twenty-two, and we're waiting for the finalization of that percentage. But nonetheless, it affects the, the wages right off the bat for two thousand and twenty-three. There is also an adjustment of the compensation policy for exempt non-union employees to ensure we are able to attract and retain employees to Fort St. John. And it was a minor increase, but there's one new net additional full-time equivalent position. And the listing of the, the different positions that, that we paid for and shifting some dollars around has been identified in the report. On the non-capital items that were moved to operations, these were items like IT and other maintenance contracts that were previously in capital that were covered by the PRA money. But now we're, we can't justify it as remaining in capital has to be under operations, but we'll still cover it with PRA money. So it hasn't, that part doesn't affect tax revenue. And then RCMP contract increase, we'd budgeted in two thousand and twenty-two for about six and a half million on the contract, and it's coming in something like seven point three, seven point four million, or even seven point five million. The, so the, based on the current estimate provide, provided by the RCMP, our budget for two thousand and twenty-three is seven point five million. So it's jumped up quite a bit from the previous budgeted number. So all told, that was five million, six hundred and seventy thousand that we, we found ourselves in deficit and had to figure out how we're going to pay for this. So it's going to be a combin- combination of things. The tax revenue increase will total one million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Of that, really, and that's a combination of a tax rate increase and the assessment value increase. And if the assessment, and typically assessment values decrease by April, we'll get that report from BC Assessment, but if so, we would have to increase the tax rate correspondingly. So what I'm asking counsel to approve is actually the total dollars, the one million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, no matter which way the assessment values go and how we adjust the tax rate. As I previously mentioned, for those non-capital items that we moved into operations, we'll cover that, we'll continue to cover that with Peace River Agreement revenue in the tune of one point seven million. And we'll increase our PRA transfer in addition to that from five percent to ten percent, which will add almost one point three million to cover the deficit, and we'll transfer seven hundred and ninety-one thousand from contingency. The, so we are essentially using three point eight million from grant revenue, Peace River Agreement grant revenue, and the contingency reserve to cover increasing costs. We'll have to continue to do this in future years unless we find additional non-tax revenue and, and, and reduce costs. And just as a side note, a one percent increase in the tax rate is equivalent to three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. And if we did not use Peace River Agreement money and, and the contingency reserve, we'd have to add eleven point six percent to the tax rate in addition to what we're already doing. The, I think it's important that, and I provided you with historical assessment analysis way back to two thousand and fourteen, but for, in order to see some of this on a PowerPoint, I've only included two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. Although there has been five hundred and fifty-nine additional residential units since two thousand and sixteen, there has been virtually no growth at all over the past five years. While the additional tax revenue for two thousand and twenty-three represents a nine percent increase for an average residential property, it is only a three percent increase compared to two thousand and sixteen. For the future, population growth and residential development could possibly play a key role in keeping property taxes relatively moderate. So residential average property values increased by five point nine seven percent. Light industry, four and a half percent. Commercial industry, commercial businesses, four point eight two percent. You see major industry decreased by seven point eight percent because each year they're applying depreciation, and that affects the, the value, the assessment value. So overall, the, on the resident, average residential property of three hundred and forty-three thousand, taxes, tax revenue would increase by a hundred and fifty-four dollars. For commercial businesses, it would increase for the year by one thousand twenty-four, and for light industry, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. So what are other municipalities doing? Last year, by this time, I was able to get twelve or thirteen municipalities that were already declaring what their tax rate increases would be, along with their increase in assessment values. This year, I think there's a number of municipalities that are taking their time before they identify what kind of tax revenue increase it's going to be. But we can see, like, for terrorists in Lake Country, where they were looking at eight or nine percent or even higher, Lake Country is contemplating anywhere between ten percent and nineteen percent. But, so we'll see, all municipalities are having to face these inflationary pressures. And in our particular case, you know, the largest increase in expense we have is on the salary, wages and benefits side, and that primarily was due to adjusting for cost of living. That was, that was built into the collective agreement. I put this one in because counsel approves this budget. This is the way that the province wants us to submit the budget in this format. And while the revenue is fairly obvious and, and logical, on the expense side, it's hard to analyze against departments or departmental. So I put this in there just so that you see what, what does get submitted to the province. But what I do is I take that and I translate it into what are the real expenses here when we look at something like salary and wages and benefits, contracted services, material goods and supplies and things like that. It's a little more clear and, and how we balance the budget, because we, we aren't allowed as a municipality to present a budget in deficit. So, and then I take, then, this is how we balance the budget here, the, the kind of income statement we look at. And you can see that overall revenues are going up. We are almost, we're not quite at pre-pandemic levels on the revenues in different areas, but we're getting there, it's improving. But on the expense side, everything is increasing. So actuarial adjustments, on the revenue side, that's increased because we have additional debt and it's, it's a external audit calculation. Government transfers, Peace River Agreement revenue will increase by two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The contribution from PRD will increase by sixty-four thousand, and the casino is recovering to pre-pandemic levels, and that's increased by sixty thousand from last year's, from the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Other revenue-owned sources, we've got Recycle BC, we'll get more money from them for two hundred and forty thousand. There is, as I mentioned, some post-pandemic recovery, but such things as ICE rentals and permit, permits still are not at pre-pandemic levels, and that's kind of a, that's a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand unfavorable. So we're hoping in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll, we'll see more of a recovery, but we're not quite sure yet. And maybe for two thousand and twenty-four, we'll get, we'll recover and have an additional to, almost three hundred thousand more in revenue in those, in ICE rentals and permits alone. Return on investment, higher interest rates, as you're well aware of now, so we've adjusted for that in the budget. Sale of services, which is really water and sewer, that's a combination of an increase in water sewer volume and rates. And we increase our utility rates moderately a year, I believe it's one percent. Services provided to other governments, these are increased just to, to align with the actual revenues that we're seeing. Taxes, the assessments and tax revenue increase of two point six million, plus a transfer, transit tax revenue increase of two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Transfer in, that's a transfer from reserves to help offset the deficit. Contracted, on the expense side, contracted and general services, we got the RCMP contract, additional cost of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and there's additional maintenance on PSC, on the Palmeroy Sports Center, North Peace Arena and Curling Club, which totals six hundred and fifty thousand, and we moved contracts from, from capital totaling six hundred and thirty-two thousand. Interest and bank charges, again, additional charges related to active net and four additional loans, that's why there's an increase there. Material goods and supplies, again, maintenance projects that we've moved from capital to operating totaling one point three million. Other expenses, we've got post-pandemic additional events totaling about ninety-seven thousand. The pool, eighty-seven thousand additional expense, and community awareness communication program, fifty-three thousand. Principal and long-term debt, that's the full year effect of additional LAS debt taken on in, from two thousand and twenty-two. The salary, wages and benefits, again, I mentioned the annual increases plus the CPI adjustment per the collective agreement, and, and then we also boosted some exempt staff to ninety-five percent of midpoint. We have one additional net FTE, and it's partially offset by a five percent staff vacancy discount, which we carried over from the two thousand and twenty-two budget also. Transfers out, this is a function of grants received and transfer out to our capital reserves and utilities that we've paid, that's really an effect of inflation across the board. One thing that does not include, whether it's two thousand and twenty-three or right through two thousand and twenty-seven, we have not included any recovery that we must do for the contingency reserves. So that's the operating budget. On the capital side, over the next five years, we anticipate spending one hundred and fifty-six million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seventy-two dollars. Most of that is, is not, most of that is paid by the province or federal government. The only part that the, the residential people, property owners, or not residential, the, any property owners in the city pay is our sewer and water rates, that, so that we can build up our reserves. And, but most of it, about seventy percent of it is usually paid through, by the Peace River Agreement money. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we anticipate our capital program will be fifty-two point two million. So of that, as I mentioned, the Peace River Agreement money is almost seventy percent, and we've got conditional provincial and federal grants totaling about twelve percent. The sewer and water will draw on those reserves by about, well, that represents thirteen, thirteen and a half percent, or almost seven million dollars. And then we have other federal, regional grants and the developer contributions. So whereas most municipalities, many municipalities have an infrastructure component to their tax rate, that's one thing that Fort St. John does not have, and that's because of the Peace River Agreement money. If that ever got reduced or eliminated, we would have to severely curtail our capital program. So we're, we are, we, we don't take for granted that money from year to year, and we, we do projects that are needed and not just to do projects. We're very, we're very careful that way. We don't want to waste the provincial taxpayers' money. So this page is large, it's two pages, actually, the transportation. We've got a lot of projects that total, over five years, on the roads, eighty-three million, all of which is paid, most ninety, ninety-eight percent of which is paid through PRA and some through the LAS borrowing that we do. But the big projects are Hundred Street Rebuild and Ken Park Stormwater Control, Road Overlay, and, and, well, the the dollars here is that for competitive reasons, when we go to tender, we want to make sure we get the most competitive prices, and it's worked out well in, in the past couple of years. This, this is the second page, and the number of projects are extensive. And, yep, it's almost twenty million a year, or a little more than twenty million a year sometimes, over the next three years. On the facility side, we're finishing up the RCMP building this year. We've got Ken Park upgrades, new construction for Emergency Services Building, Kids Arena Fieldhouse retrofit, Matthew Park's equipment replacement, and on and on, so the list there continues. So for facilities, buildings and parks, over five years, we are spending almost, just short of forty-nine million, all of which is paid through PRA. Water and sewer, this is a self-funding, self-financing through our utility rates, and we continue to upgrade what's underground and what's, things like the lift station, earthworks, and water main looping, which continues from year to year to year. On equipment, vehicles and machinery, the big ones are hydro excavator with rotor, grader, hook lift truck, rubber truck excavator, another hook lift, and service vehicles, and on and on, totaling six point four million over five years, but in two thousand and twenty-three, it'll be four million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand. And then C five, we have studies, plans and projects. And these, these end up, these, for the most part, these end up in operations, but we cover that with PRA money. So it's similar to what we've done with the maintenance contracts. And that'll total for three, three million ninety, almost ninety-two thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, but we'll be spending seven million over basically four years, all paid for through PRA money. And that's it, that's, any questions?
We do have some questions. Counselor Stewart, please.
Thank you, David, for your presentation. First off, I'm very uncomfortable with a, a five percent increase of our Peace River Agreement. For that to even be proposed just scares me, and you stated it later within your presentation how important that, that agreement is. And so that, if we can't follow the guidelines of the agreement and we walk down a path of just increasing the dollars for operations, it, it puts us in a bad spot. I'm not a spot that I'm comfortable with at all.
Right.
I'd rather cut if we need to look at things.
Yeah, I have, I've looked at, we aren't finished two thousand and twenty-two yet. You know, we still have the external audit, and those numbers won't be finalized until mid-February, end of February. But I did look at two thousand and twenty-two actual costs that are currently in the books and compared it to the two thousand and twenty-three budget, and we're very close. There's very few adjustments. What adjustments I could see being made was a total of fifty-nine thousand, which is about one-sixth of one percent of the tax rate. So I, I can't see, there's not much fat in the, in the budget. And over the last three years, we've run small deficits. And this year, sorry, for two thousand and twenty-two, not only, you know, even though we had a staff vacancy rate of seven percent, in which, you know, that could create a nice, comfortable surplus for us, it's wiped out by the retroactive adjustment we're going to have to do for the COLA adjustment plus the RCMP contract. So it's likely we're going to be, probably have a minor deficit again four years in a row. So at some point, we've got to recover this, whether, you know, and we, we still, as I mentioned, we haven't, on the revenue side, the non-tax revenue, we haven't fully recovered yet, we're getting there. And on the cost side, how we reduce costs, I'm not quite sure at this point, how much further we can reduce without cutting back on levels of service.
There was, within your presentation, it's my eyesight, one point three million dollars was shifted from capital to operations. Can you describe more of what that was and why that became maintenance as opposed to many other things?
I'll defer that answer to Shirley, who's worked closely with the, developing that number.
You have to turn her off. My bad, thank you.
Should be good.
Maybe it's this one. All right, I actually want to speak to your previous question. Although we may have identified the additional five percent in the budget for coming toward, from PRA and reserves, it's not saying we're going to use it. It's only there to balance it. At year-end, I only take or use what I need to use. So it could only, in the end, it could only end up being three percent that I need.
But we're, we would, you'd be looking for us to approve up to five percent?
Up to five percent, yes. Okay. As for, as for the, the, what we call major projects that have been transferred from capital into operating, these are projects that, in the past, we've recorded them as capital, but technically they're not capital. It's replacing the carpet, it's replacing, it's non-capital, but they're big projects. So there to, and we've noticed that our buildings are slowly deteriorating. We've need to put some more money into keeping the bill, regular maintenance of the buildings up to date. Pool is a prime example, even though it's not our building, but it's a prime example. It's going to start happening with the rest of the buildings. So we, we fight every year, when I do year-end, as to, is this a capital project? So I've identified these projects, these things as only maintenance projects, they're ma- major maintenance projects, but they're still maintenance. They're not capital. And so we're trying to do the shift as to bringing them back into operating where they belong. So, and, yes, it's probably a bad year to do it because of all the other restrictions we have on our budget.
And it hasn't affected the tax rate that way, because we were covering it under capital with PRA money, we're still covering it when it's been moved to operations.
No, well, I, I get that, but I, I get also the emails that say, and that tax dollars are tax dollars and PRA is tax dollars. But what we're doing with it is our responsibility, and that's why we're having a meeting. And the increase of five percent, up to five percent, is a big jump, and it's an uncomfortable jump for me. What we're moving from maintenance of capital projects into an operations thing, to me, it's a gray area of, of everything. And, and I went through the budget lines trying to look, what would I eliminate? It's really hard to do because they're all vital to our community, but, but it's just different aspects of what is maintenance, of is changing carpet, we need the building. So is it, is it capital, is it operations? We need to be here. If we're not here, we're all working from home. The only thing that did come up to me that I, I questioned would be transit, is transit capital or operations? And can we shift some of that around in different ways?
Transit? Did you say?
Transit is, our, our bus, our handy dart, that kind of thing of, should that be within our PRA money as opposed to our capital budget? I'm rambling.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, but I, I wouldn't think so. That's all operational.
I'll let somebody else talk.
Thank you. Counselor Zabinski, please.
Thank you, Dave, for your presentation. I too, like Counselor Stewart, a little concerned about the increase of the PRA funding going that way, or potential use of it. But you did bring up, and I just wanted clarification, numbers are off on me, but I'm just reading what I got here. I noted here that PRA to cover non-capital items moving to operations, you had one point seven two million dollars. Then on slide, just so that we figure out, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this, this would be this slide I would be, and I don't know, it's, it's the variance analysis two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-two. And under the expenses, contract and general services, you had mentioned that we're moving six hundred and twenty, thirty-two thousand dollars moving from capital. And then two lines below that, under material goods and supplies, to cover regular maintenance project move from capital, one point three. So if I add those two together, I got it at one point nine, and you're saying we're going to move one point seven. Am I missing two hundred thousand? And again, this is just num, it's just synoptics in, in numbers.
I'd have to look at that again, but it's, 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 I can't explain it right now.
Okay.
Good point.
That was one question, if I may, mayor? Oh, sorry.
It could be because he's looking at contract other on some lines, and then some of the other costs would be under maintenance or
Okay, I was just reading those, those points.
He just didn't pick them all up.
Yeah, and it's, you know, we're rounding a little bit in the variance explanation, so.
Good enough, I'll accept that. I know it wasn't a large amount, but I just wanted to see if
And there's other items in there. And there's other items in there besides those, yeah.
I just thought, you know, if we're going to take the 1.7 from PRA, why not 1.9? Because that's the numbers I had here.
But we, I'll interject a little bit. I think when we do finalize the external financial statements for 2022, we will report back to council how much PRA money we actually had to use. I mean, it'd be worthwhile.
The other thing is, is, and I too have been chatted to about our upcoming budget and what it looks like. First of all, are any of our user fees going to change based on preliminary budget? I don't see that, I don't think our user fees are going to change in regards to this.
Well, you know, we, we increase our fees every year in the
And it's worked into the budget, but not significantly. Correct me if
Moderately.
Moderately. And reason, and here's where they're coming from, is that some of the taxpayers are stating is that my taxes are going to go up, but yet some of the users are not in our community and they're not going to see a significant increase to them. And they would rather see it, user fees go up because that would affect everybody than they're just their taxes in regards to, but you know, I'm not giving that suggestion to you guys. Again, this is more so that, this is a comment that, that I'm seeing out there that they want everybody to sort of offset sort of our capital costs, operating costs more so that is happening right now because, you know, we supply the staffing for these products, you know, for the facilities and everyone's using it, but it, it feels that just our hub of voting community is paying for it right now.
Right.